Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for October 6, 2016. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this point, we would ask any audience member that has an electronic device or cellphone to please turn it to silent or turn it off. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the City Council. The City Council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item 216PD042 and item 616UR019. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through six staff wants to remove?
Item four, please.
Okay. Any items one through six a planning commissioner would like removed?
Five and six, Mr. Chair.
And any items that the audience would like removed for separate consideration? Chair would entertain a motion on items one through three then. Galen made the motion to approve items one through three. Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item four is a preliminary subdivision plan to create one lot at Auburn Hills subdivision, and this is north along the west side of Haynes Avenue. We met with the applicant and his consultant yesterday, and he is going to be submitting a revised plat and has requested that this item be continued to your November 10th Planning Commission meeting, and that would be our recommendation.
Karen made the motion to continue till November 10th. Linda seconded that motion. All those in favor of continuation, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item five?
Mr. Chair, I'll be abstaining from items five, six, seven, eight, nine. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Item five, I don't think there's any other... Anything? Okay. Linda made the motion to approve items five and six with Andy not voting on these. Galen seconded that motion. All those in favor of items five and six, please say aye. Aye. And then, we're at item seven.
Staff would request that items seven and eight be reviewed simultaneously.
Perfect, thanks.
The staff recommendation for item seven and eight is for approval. This is an annexation and associated rezone for property that's located on the west side of town. It's north of Sheridan Lake Road and the intersection of Poppy Trail and Dunsmore Road. I'll put up an aerial map so you can see the location we're referring to. Normally, this would be on a consent calendar, but we wanted to put it on non-consent so Mr. Skoll could have the opportunity to abstain. This is the area proposed for annexation. It's about forty-five acres. If the planning commission has any questions, we're happy to take those. We did get one letter yesterday from a resident who lives in the area concerned about the capacity of Dunsmore Road to be able to handle increased traffic that would result from the development. However, there was a traffic study conducted as part of the planning for this project, and there are no concerns identified by staff at this time.
Thank you. We do have a couple speaker request forms for these items. First one from Harley Taylor. I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So Harley's indicated that he's here to listen today and that his major concern is drainage, and if I might address that quickly?
Sure.
We anticipate that a plat will be submitted for this development in the near future, and drainage and other subdivision improvements will be addressed as a part of the plat, and that will be before the planning commission and the public for review.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Skoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Andrew Skoll, 2665 Cavern Road. I'm here, capacity as partner of Watershed Development. Basically, here just to answer any questions you may have. As Vick mentioned, today we're coming in front of you for annexation and rezone. We have met with Harley Taylor and his family and understand the concerns around drainage, and we're going to work well together to make sure that we address those when we move the plan forward through preliminary layout plan and also engineering plans. So beyond that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the commission on items seven and eight? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question really isn't have to do necessarily with your development, Andy, because I approve the what's going on. My question really maybe might be for staff. Do you have any idea when and if we're ever going to get Poppy Trail opened up so people can do that? Is that part of future development?
As you know, there was a court case specific to that that said that the connection that would be needed to do that is an easement and not right-of-way. So until that issue is resolved, I don't see a connection farther to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Linda made, excuse me, Linda made the motion to approve items seven and eight. Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Item nine?
Item nine is a final plan development to allow a single-family residential development that's existing. Three exceptions are requested. One is to reduce the minimum required lot size for a parcel-zoned Park Forest District from three acres to point zero, 0.36 acres. An exception to allow a reduced rear yard setback of fifty feet or nineteen feet in lieu of the minimum required fifty feet in the Park Forest District. And then, exception to waive the requirement for property abut a public street for a minimum of fifty feet. This property is located at 210 Columbus Street, currently zoned Park Forest District. There is an existing single-family dwelling and a detached garage located on the property. This is an existing development. We're not proposing any expansion of the property. The purpose of the final plan development is to get these exceptions in place so that the existing single-family home is brought into compliance and with the ordinance and so that the property owner can transfer the property without having zoning being an issue. Purpose of the Park Forest District is to maintain open space and natural character. As you can see, to the south, there's a hillside in the middle of the city, and it's currently undeveloped. Future land use shows it's forest conservation, and to the south is forest conservation. To the north is downtown district and with this urban neighborhood between them. So it's right on the cusp of being in the downtown. The request for the property that does not abut a public street for a minimum of fifty feet is because the property is located or constructed on an alleyway that is... This is an alley between First and Third Street, so there is no public street that it can abut. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations, with stipulation number four being adding the word "allow" after "shall" for a shall-allow a single-family residential development. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't see any questions for staff on this one. Linda made the motion to approve. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Come, come right this way.
Could you come speak at the...
My name is, my name is Ben Doughty, and I own the property at 121 and 123 Quincy. I wasn't expected to talk this morning. You mentioned the purpose of this was for future possible, possible development. The property, if I understand correctly, which was offered, has quite a hillside behind, quite a hillside. The hillside also goes up to a water reservoir that is up there on top of the hill on the same level as what used to be called Star Village. I understand, if I understood correctly what the gentleman said, it's not that they're looking to develop at this time, just in the future, somebody may want to develop it and sell the property. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I think this is just to establish this house as a conforming, single-family house, whereas it was currently in a non-conforming state to current code. It was built way back when.
I understand, I understand. I've been a property owner there about twelve or fifteen years now. I understand the raggedness of it, let's put it that way.
So I don't think there's any intent to develop this. It's just a, an action so this can be sold as a single-family home to a new, single-family.
Well, in that case, clarify, I appreciate the clarification, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think we caught it after we took action, so I think we can move ahead at this point. We don't have any other items on the agenda, but...
Mr. Chair, as you see, that Carla does have a staff item for you today. However, I did want to point out that your next meeting, you will be electing officers, and that's the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. So if you guys want to talk amongst yourselves and see who's interested and be prepared next meeting to bring forward your nominations.
Sounds good, thank you.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about due process rights in planning and zoning decisions. This is a presentation that some of you have heard several times. Maybe it's new to some people. I'll try to keep it brief, but, and I've tried to add in a few things for the, for the people who have heard it a few times to hopefully make it more interesting. Sorry, how do I get it to go? There we go. Due process is a right founded in the Constitution, both our state and our federal Constitution. It's the starting point for our discussion today. It provides that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law. That is further clarified by South Dakota statute and then looked at further and defined further when courts review decisions. I believe that, Eric, you asked Wade to talk about due process in light of some new laws that were passed by the legislature in 2016. I'm going to talk a little bit about House Bill 1214. My interpretation and my belief is that it doesn't apply to you all, but it is indicative of a statute that's provided or that's passed by the legislature to further define what due process is and particularly conflicts of interest. I believe this was passed in response to the gear-up issues with Department of Education funds. It applies to state commissions and contracts, to municipalities who execute those similar types of programs, or to local agencies that receive money from the state. So it's really concerned with state dollars. It provides that a member of the commission or the deciding body cannot have an interest in the contract or derive a direct benefit from any contract that's passed by the commission or approved by the body that's reviewing it. The statute does define what derives a benefit means. It discusses, you know, five percent or more of the contract is, goes to one of the members. They derive some sort of income from the, from the contract. They acquire a property under the contract. And it also says that for a commission member, it's enough of a conflict of interest if somebody that they live with and commingle assets with gets a similar benefit. So the legislature has looked at this and said, we're going to specifically define what's appropriate and what's not appropriate and put it in law so that it's actually a misdemeanor if you violate this. And it also says that the commission can authorize this if the interest is fully disclosed to the board, if one of the board members says, I have this interest, I'm going to be making money from this contract. The commission could authorize it, or the board or state board or whatever could authorize it if it's disclosed, but then that does have to be reported to the state. So this particularly does not apply to you, but it's a good example of how the due process considerations of conflict of interest have been addressed. And I think, you know, you all run into conflicts of interest. We saw one, we saw several today with Mr. Skoll, and generally, you recuse yourself, and I think that's an appropriate way to behave. All right, due process rights are different in different contract, context. For quasi-judicial bodies, which for you is the zoning board, all of you serve, of course, as zoning board members as well as planning commissioners. For quasi-judicial bodies such as the zoning board, due process is paramount. You'll recall that the zoning board, by state law, any decisions are not appealed to council, but instead must be pursued in court. And that's what renders this, the zoning board, a quasi-judicial body. And so, since the decision of the board is final, generally, unless a court reverses it, but final at the city level, due process is, is very important. Now, I recognize that your zoning board decisions are generally smaller in scope and smaller in effect than your planning commission decisions, but that doesn't, that's not really important when we're talking about the fact that it's a final decision and it's a quasi-judicial body. So for a recommending body, which generally the planning commission is, because most of your items either automatically go to council or can be appealed to council, due process is still very important, but it's, it's a little less important. But I guess I would say that's a legal distinction. If you're, if we're arguing about something in court, we have a little bit more cover if we're talking about due process, but really, due process is also very important in terms of public appearance of your decisions as being impartial. And, you know, my consideration is defending your decisions in court. There's obviously a lot more considerations to, beyond that, to just make sure that your decisions appear to be and actually are fair to the applicants and the people who oppose them. So what does due process require? It requires notice to interested parties and the public that something is happening and when they can show up to be heard, an opportunity to be heard, a right to know the arguments against one's position, a decision that's based on the information and the facts presented to the body, and a right to an impartial decision maker. That last right, impartial decision maker, was what House Bill 1214 was trying to get at in those bodies, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Some helpful case law, there was just, right to notice is taken pretty seriously, honestly. In a 2016 case that just came out, the Beetle County Commission, it was a, there was a lawsuit concerning a decision that they had made. The applicant pointed out that the county ordinance, zoning ordinance, state law says it needs to be published ten days before passage of the ordinance. It was actually published eight days before the passage of the ordinance. The court said, too bad, so sad, the county ordinance is thrown out. That is a situation we would really prefer to avoid because invalidating a zoning ordinance years after it was passed is messy. So that's something that's taken pretty seriously, and you don't need to worry about that. We all worry about it, especially Andrea, and she does a great job, and that's why sometimes things are continued, because we need to make sure to really comply with the letter of the law. But that's, that's a due process right that's, that's protected. They're also, you know, people are also entitled to a decision that's based on the facts and information presented. In Haynes versus Board of Adjustment of the City of Miller, they were looking at a variance to allow a mobile home in a residential area. The court said, a bunch of neighbors came in to complain about it, but there wasn't any real reason to reject the variance request in the record. And the court said, well, the decision was just, was not based on any facts or information that the board was supposed to consider. Instead, they just outsourced their decision to the neighbors, and they did overturn that decision. So those are a couple cases in South Dakota. Now, let's talk about the right to impartial decision makers. Courts reviewing this talk about that the decision makers, you all need to be free from actual bias or interest. So they look at financial interest, personal interest, if your house is located in the rezone area, if you have some sort of personal interest in a, you know, conditional use permit application or a variance request. They look at direct versus indirect, so if the benefit is accruing to you or to somebody who's close to you. Really, the question to ask is if your interest is different than that of the general public, then would it look bad to a reasonably-minded citizen? Would there be an influen, you know, the potential that you are impartial? So that's the question to ask yourself. Courts that have looked at this obviously can't look into whether or not somebody is actually bi... I mean, sometimes it's apparent if they're making money off of it. But in terms of an indirect personal interest, you won't need to prove that that actual person was actually biased. They're just going to be able to see if there was an unacceptable risk that, that there was a bias, or if there was a strong enough perceived bias or interest. This doesn't mean that you can't rely on your own experience and background. Obviously, you all are up there and are chosen because you have some particular interest or expertise or experience or background in our city, and so it is absolutely acceptable to rely on that, and we hope that you do. There's also a statute in South Dakota that says that you can receive and consider relevant information from any source. That is in South Dakota law. It was passed in response to a case that kind of said otherwise. What I would say is, please don't disregard everything else I'm saying and hang your hat on, on this, because we're going to talk about ex parte communication in a minute, and really, due process is a right found in the Constitution. A statute can clarify that, but it can't directly go against it. And so, if you're receiving and considering relevant information from an improper source and due process rights are compromised, that statute is not going to be enough to save that decision. So I, I mention that because it's in our state law, but please don't pay attention to that, to the disregard of everything else that I'm saying. Ex parte communications. These are communications with one of the parties outside of the presence of the official proceedings. In a court situation, this is where one party talks to the judge without letting the other court, without letting the other parties know or including the other parties in the conversation. That would occur when an applicant or a neighbor who's opposing it or a consultant talks to you outside of the commission meeting or the zoning board meeting about an application that's before you. That's what we're talking about here. The danger of these is they undermine the appearance of fairness when they take place in private. There's an, there can be an insufficient record for the basis of your decision if, if these communications are what convince you to vote, convince a commission member to vote for an application or against an application, and that is not included in the record of the public meeting. There can be an insufficient record, and it just undermines the due process rights that we've been talking about. The question is really, who is a party? These are conversations with a party outside of the official proceedings. Well, an applicant or their consultant, those are parties. Neighbors, opponents, supporters, people who have an opinion on an application are a party. And the staff, let's talk about staff. Previously, I've given you a bright line rule that says your communications with staff don't really raise any due process concerns. I am withdrawing that bright line rule and offering you the same muddy rule that I'm giving you in this presentation. Our office has had several conversations over the past few months about due process and communications between staff and decision makers, and the, what prompted... And what prompted the conversations was some feedback from citizens that there was appearance that staff working with decision makers, and I believe this was mostly about council, not the planning commission or the zoning board, but that there was a perception that the decisions were made outside of the public hearing, and the public hearing was just a formality. Now, I don't, I mean, there was a concern about that, and so it prompted these conversations. And I think what I will tell you is that conversations with staff may raise some of the same concerns that conversations with other people do, particularly when they're... I mean, it depends if you're asking a factual question about what the application is asking to do, what the staff report means, you know, those kinds of questions. Information gathering is different than advocacy. And so I, I'm not going to offer you another bright line rule that says, "Don't talk to staff." That would be, I think, overkill. But what I just want you to be aware of is that some of the same concerns about communications that happen outside of a public meeting are present when you're talking about staff. And, you know, we certainly don't want a situation where citizens have a perception that the decisions that you all make are compromised by those connections with staff. I'm a little sheepish to say this, but I don't really think that I apply to this category just because I don't generally communicate with you unless it's a legal issue, and that doesn't really raise any due process concerns, either your communication with me or my communication with you. Those aren't very frequent, and when they are, they offer legal advice, so I wouldn't put myself in that category. But anyway, I did want to make that clear because I am going to be sending an email to all of you and the absent people related to this. And so that's a good example of a communication that doesn't really raise any due process concerns. All right, I'm not going to go into these cases because I think you all are ready to, are probably tired of hearing me talk, but these cases are examples of courts that have looked at these decisions and come out in different directions. They look at the facts of what was the communication that happened, what were the interests involved of the decision makers? Oh, yikes. Oh, okay. What was the level of ex parte communications? What was the involvement in the commissioner with the conflict of interest that, in the decision? Did they make the motion? Did they advocate on behalf of the application? Did they, was there a perception that people were convinced by what they said? So there's a handful of facts, or, I mean, all of the facts that the court will look at to see whether or not the commissioner was acting as an impartial decision maker or not. And, you know, courts can come out either way. So what should you do? If you rely on evidence that's not produced at the public meeting, disclose it. You know, if there's a communication or even just you drove past the site and you saw something that was important to you in your decision, just share it at the meeting, share it with the other members. If you find it persuasive, it's likely they may. If you talk to people before the meeting, disclose it here and possibly recuse yourself if you feel like you have that out of, out of the hearing conversation was improper or may, an outsider may view that as being inappropriate. You can certainly recuse yourself. If you have questions for staff, you can ask them at the meeting, or you can, you know, ask them to talk about your particular questions at the meeting. You know, if you had a question about an item, it's possible that the other commissioners did as well. And so talking about it at the public meeting is probably a good idea. We talked a little bit about site visits. If you think that's necessary to the decision, we can arrange that. I know that's not something that generally is done, but that is an option. If you feel like that is essential to the decision, then it should be in the record that everybody went out or had the opportunity to go out to the site. Or you can also ask for additional photographs from, or video from the staff who always do a comprehensive site visit. If you have an actual or perceived interest in the outcome of a decision, you should disclose it or recuse yourself. If somebody talks to you at the meeting or outside of the meeting, encourage them to come here. I think you all are probably good at that, I know staff is, about saying, "Can you send us an email? We will put it on the public comment. We can, you can show up to the meeting and offer your input and ideas and hear from the applicant." You know, that's really the best place for those conversations to happen, and that way it's in the record and everybody gets to hear it. All right, so what happens if a due process violation occurs? It undermines the appearance of fairness in the public opinion. That's not such a legal consideration so much as it is just a, you know, I want you all to be seen as a valid, impartial decision-making body, and so that is compromised if some of these violations occur. It can possibly invalidate the vote if, we're talking about a court here. If a court looking at a decision finds that one member had an improper conflict of interest or had some outside conversations with people, it can invalidate their vote. It possibly can reverse the entire decision of the commission and send it back for, to start from square one. So that is obviously not a situation that's good for you all or for the applicant or for anyone. That is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
Thanks, Carla, I appreciate it. I was most concerned about the new laws, but it's always good to get a refresher. Darla?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Carla, will you be presenting this to council?
I think Joel has plans to share this with council, or not share my presentation, but share the issues with council.
So we won't be seeing this presentation just...
I don't think so. I haven't talked, Joel hasn't asked me about that, but I think he is going to raise the issue with council in some way.
Just by the very nature of some of the committees people serve on, they have more interaction with staff, so it might be a good refresher for council to see this. And so I wouldn't be opposed to having this presentation brought before council. So if you're talking to Joel, you could just let him know that I, this is new information for me in some of this regard, so...
Well, council is tricky because you all are elected, so you have to, you know, have some level of contact with your constituents, absolutely. But there are, you know, there's, when you're acting as a, in a public hearing situation, there are certain things that come before you that have different levels of due process, I guess. And a public hearing for a conditional use permit is different than a contract with the Public Works Department. So I think this information is going to be shared with council, just probably with Taylor to your situation.
All right, well, thank you. I'll, of course, I'll see to your wishes, but thank you for your presentation and, you know, however Joel or you want to handle that, but I really enjoyed your presentation. Thank you.
Anything further today? All right, look for a motion to adjourn. Everybody made a motion and seconded it? I'll call Stephen and Andy. All those in favor, please say aye.